Okay, let's call this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. As everyone had a chance to review the agenda, got a couple more lines on it this week. Probably why we got the press to show up. Anyway, if there's no, does anyone have any conflicts at this time? Hearing none? Are there any objections to this agenda? Hearing none of those, the agenda will stand through with red or reviewed. Madam Auditor, will you please read us the minutes of the last meeting?
September twelve twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman Presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, and Mulbauer. Hyden via Zoom. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved on motion. Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hyden to approve the conversion from swine facility, or conversion, wasn't it? Okay, conversion from swine facility to B facility at Hennington Farm C A F O site. No comments were submitted, motion passed unanimously. The board recognized the retirement of Bayou K nine for Sheriff's Department for her ten years of service for Crawford County. Maureen Hanson, District Three, for Third Judicial District, Department of Corrections Services, shared information and resources about their department with the board. Riley Gibson, Turnkey Logistics gave the board an update on the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. On motion, oh, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the application for CRP at the county farm, motion passed unanimously. On motion, Julie Second, Board adjourned eleven twenty-seven AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available to courthouse on Friday four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, will stand approved. Thank you, Madam Auditor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, Supervisors' reports. Jean didn't have a very busy week outside of Tri-City, so let's start with her.
Okay, I did not, but I did have a wellness meeting before I left. And they're getting really close to having the Y M C sign their contract, their attorneys, everybody's kind of going over it.
So, did you see the contract?
I personally did not, no. I personally did not.
So, is what, if you don't know, then if Y M C A is paying us or are we paying Y M C A?
In the first couple of years, it's the city will be paying them for the startup part of it. So, those are some dollars that they're talking about how that's going to happen. And, you know, with the projection and performance, how that's all going to work. But in the beginning, the city will have to look in the papers and start.
Do you know what that amount is?
The number that was thrown out was two hundred thousand a year. Ouch. It is enough, but it all depends a little bit on how fast they can get all memberships to get everything kind of going. So, those are, those are the things they're tweaking a little bit.
So, you know, because I've heard that Y M C A has made some projections themselves down the road. And they're looking at it potentially, I guess, comparing it to the Atlantic facility. And like you say, as memberships come on board, that down the road, they're thinking three, four years down the road, they could be making three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there any way that they can recoup that, those funds back to the city? If we're going to help them start out, can we get back or a percentage of those profits come back to the city?
In that short meeting, that was a small part of the meeting and that was not discussed. Now, I have another, this is my twelve o'clock meeting is today, we're having a quick meeting again, so I'm not sure.
About Y M C A yet? Did I get a question?
About the whole thing. So, I'll bring that up, I'll bring that up.
I, I don't know, I got a call. People were asking about a Y M C A issue that happened up in Illinois with that. On the transgender stuff and all that stuff, the Y M C A's rules and how that made up.
Well, they've been there.
We've been checking into, I mean, how they're gonna, I mean, is that going to create a bunch of extra expense? I mean, are we going to have to create three sets of bathrooms?
The Y M C A has been there through our entire planning session of where the bathrooms are going to be and how they're, when they've not mentioned anything. You know, as usual, just like we are here at courthouse, it's going to be the family restroom, you know, so that will probably take care of that, you see, where it comes up that is open for, you know, gentlemen that need to change baby diapers or also generally bathroom. So, he's not brought that up publicly in any of the meetings, and I think that he would have as for planning and deciding. Because we had to go back and redesign at one point in time, you know, when they had the big plan that was going to be twenty-six million, and we had to cut it back down to eighteen million, there were some changes to all of that as far as, and he's not publicly talked about their requirements. But I think our family bathroom will cover that.
Well, I'm just hoping that, you know, that way we don't have any shared bathrooms from that stuff. That was what the concern was of the person that called me. And I said, well, I don't really know, I mean, it's not my project, but I have said, I do know somebody that can probably address that.
I can address that at Nuno's, so.
Thank you.
Kind of did that. The other issues that have kind of, well, and then we also met for our R and P's over at the City Center. And I had four folks there looking at the concrete at different times. We've got one sealed bid back in, and that sealed bid could possibly be for painting, concrete indoors and windows. They were interested in all three of them, I walked them around the whole thing. They said, oh, the city has the ability. You did, you did. Well, they, they said they did a lot of work at that building when the hospital had it, so they're for mayor now here. And then there was a guy there that I didn't know, he didn't know that he was supposed to come up here and pick up the whole specs. And so, I was assuming he came up and picked those up.
I don't know.
Yeah, so I, I know we have four of the specs out.
The deadline was yesterday.
Well, that's always.
At three.
Well, I've got a painting gal that's working very seriously on it. In fact, I ran into her at the freight up in Sluswick, and she was very curious if we were going to stay with three colors or two colors or one color. So, I caught, talked to Kim, and Kim had thought about it, but then when I, this gal was really needing to know because it makes a difference, you know, if you have to paint, then, you know. So, we decided with the two colors, you know, to complement a little bit, but nothing too fancy, just maybe. So, we kind of did that.
Much love.
And then there's been a lot of discussion, as you guys know, about the I U T O D board meetings and what Summit has now come up with for their water needs. You know, we've got people right now hauling water for their cattle and whatnot, we're really, we've had four years of drought. And I talked to Rory down at the D M U, you know, with this, because I realize they're going to be doing their wells, but it still comes from our same aquifer. And so, what's that going to mean? You know, we're in a drought, so Cory wanted to know, he needs to know more, how many gallons per minute? How many gallons per day, how many gallons per month? And I haven't, I don't know if I've seen that in any literature, but that'll make a difference. But they've opened up twelve or thirteen LLCs specifically for application to the D N R for approval. I believe two of them have been approved. And so, you know, Crawford County needs to be kind of thinking about what happens. Because if you remember, when they came the first time, we talked about water. They said, oh, we're going to bring it in in wagons and we're going to reuse it. And there was no talk of rolling their own wells.
Ruining a hydrant test of the pipe, they're all watering.
Yeah. But they never mentioned anything about later on that it was going to be a continually.
They only need the water if they have a capture facility. So, I mean, if they don't have the capture facility, which they don't currently in Crawford County,
Don't.
They won't be using any water in Crawford County.
They currently don't, but I, you know, you've got to kind of look into the future, knowing, you know, where our capture facility is and how the pipeline has kind of worked itself to be around it. And, you know, Andersons have stayed very neutral on all of it, you know, so I think that there's reasons for all of that, if you kind of.
Well, I mean, Anderson signed at ease. So, I mean, you can say, I guess, they've been neutral, but I mean, I agree that they're looking for the future that, they want to keep that as a possibility, as an option, that's okay. And I, I'm not, I'm sorry, Dan?
Oh, I just, no, they already captured the Andersons, that's the CO2.
Andersons has their own well too, that this.
Yeah, I mean, they're already capturing their.
For the, for the.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I guess I meant for Summit, they're not capturing for Summit.
If, if the Andersons joined, I mean, they're already doing carpet capturing, the CO2.
Shipping it under the railroad over to the ice plant.
So, your, your point is that they're already using the same amount of water, the water is not changed?
We don't know, nobody, you know, those are the things that, you know, to be good stewards of our land, need to kind of ask ahead of time, because every time we turn around, there's, because I would think that would have been something they would have talked about in all the updates and all the meetings that they've given us, the need for water, you know.
I, I agree, I think the water usage thing is something that we never talked about at the beginning.
That's right, that's right, even though we did talk about it, but it was just kind of a, oh, we're just going to tank it in and they will recycle it, but never the need for what's going to happen for the rest of it.
Because it makes you, it makes you wonder, I guess, that when you read through, I think Cindy sent us some stuff.
The Rogan information.
That they need the, initially to cool it in order to send it through the pipes. And then what happens to that water after it's used for that process? It sounds like, is there some use for that water afterwards? That is something I'd, I'd like to know, because I don't know the answer to that.
I think that we need to put our heads together on what questions we need to ask and make sure that the questions that we ask, go back and double check, because in the hearings is when they brought this all up now, that they're going to need all this water, and they testified under oath, so they are going to definitely need it. And I think that we're only as good as the information we have. And I think going in with your eyes wide open are a lot better than finding out, oh, I didn't realize we're going to have to tap into our water supply also, you know, and common sense tells you that they're going to use more than Andersons is using now, I mean.
I just.
That's my common sense, anyway.
And that's, I'm not saying it's a problem that should be treated lightly, but did we question when Monogram's food started back up? They're using thirty-nine million gallons of water a year roughly? Or when the truck washes that are using fifteen million gallons a year, did we question that?
Nobody came to us at the Board of Supervisors for all of that.
I mean, Farmland uses a million gallons a day.
They do. And they, theirs is not.
So, but I question it, if you take Summit starts caption, the continental carbonics that, what I've gathered through information, uses roughly eighty thousand gallon of water a day. Will we, will it be a net zero? Because they won't be capturing, or they'll be going someplace else. So, that, I asked Riley, and I'm trying to find that information. So, if we're in that, we're not using more water than we currently are, or, or what's the amount more that we will be?
And as you know, our concern is Crawford County. So, you know, they talk about the entire state when they're talking about it, so I think we need to pin them down to what's.
My biggest concern with the water capture is exactly what you alluded to a little bit ago. I mean, is there any contaminants that get put into it? I would guess not, if they're just using it to cool, but that's just a guess, no expert. And what can we do to reuse water like that? You know, I mean, that, when I, when I was down there at Naco, and they were talking about the way they were reusing water in some of these cities now, I don't know if that's something you would request that they, all right, you're going to be using this water, but your excess, you know, I mean, in the winter time, what do you do with it? I don't know. But in the summertime, like running back to, to common area, like I said, the golf course, I brought that up because there's a lot of water gets used out there that comes out of our freshwater supply. You know, so if we could use quote unquote wastewater, that, that's not contaminated, it wouldn't, I mean, is that something you could use there and other places like that? You know, I mean, our parks or everything else, you know, I mean, that, that would be just something that I would, that was somewhere I would like to go.
Well, I think.
Because that's conservation then.
I bring it up to possibly put it on the agenda, so that they can come in and we can ask those questions, that we're not all assuming and guessing. And so, I would like to possibly have the expert on the water supply and how that works come back in now that we know that for sure, it's going to be more water coming out of our county. That we talk about it heart to heart, real fast.
But do we have the authority to even do anything with that?
Well, we don't get to approve or not approve, but I think it's.
Industry, so, I mean, it'd be nice, no, you could just, you could just see if you could work with them, you know what I'm saying? That's why I said, you know, the fact that we stay on, on amicable terms with the carbon cap, or with the carbon company is.
Well, Rory from D M U would like to know.
Able to work with them.
Rory from D M U would like to know, you know, how many, his was, how many gallons per day? How, how many gallons per minute, how many gallons per day, how many gallons per month? That would be information you'd like to know, that's going to be coming out of the same water sources.
Well, to address Kyle's point, I mean, we do use a lot of, a lot of water already.
We do.
And, and, and we, maybe that's something that should have been already brought up, because our aquifer is pretty much the same one that runs under through here. And I, I can't tell you that there wouldn't be a different aquifer they'd be tapping if they, but they're, I, I find it interesting they use different LLCs, every one of their water catchers.
All silent, same.
That's, that's kind of interesting. But in any event, the.
It's a business.
Yeah, I mean, businesses do that, parks, livestock, every one of their states, their LLC is a different LLC.
Same attorney signed it at all.
But the, but in any event, I mean, the water stuff is something that we're, there's a, I'm just going to say it. There's a group of us trying to figure out future water supplies for Crawford County and Western Iowa already. And we're trying to really work in a positive direction to secure us more waters as best we can, however we can. And things like this, you don't want to stifle the growth of any business, if it's a positive business, but you want to make sure you've got the water supplies to meet our, our essential needs, our, our human and animal welfare, obviously. And, you know, so we, we, we need to be conscious of that. And I, I think that that's a great point, that we're, that we're, we are asking the responsible question. And Kyle's doing the research to make sure we're, what we're, so I appreciate both the efforts that you're giving here. I don't think there's any conflict here, I think this is, this is all something that's, I mean, it's something we've got to do for the future of Crawford County. I mean, we don't know if the drought's going to, you know, the global warming things, what's causing this? I mean, these are things we've got to be conscious of.
You know, the point that we don't approve the applications for it, but we still need to kind of know what's going on in our county and what effect it possibly could have in the long run and actually know the facts rather than, you know, so we'll find out.
Well, I think to ask the questions on behalf of our, our citizenry is.
So, put it on the agenda. Get the right people in the room.
Yeah, how much water does a hog barn use a day? Thirty thousand?
Heat of it, size of hog barn, I mean.
You know, that might be something to ask Rory if he could even research for us, because obviously they've got better information.
Well, I could call him and.
And see if they could research the average amount of water used in Crawford County in a day and a week in a year.
Ask the people in the know, and then that's, that subject has been researched and.
Or can they use, can they use wastewater to cool their, wastewater to cool their stuff?
That's where they could have a recycle.
Pumping it and pumping it.
And just reuse.
Under the ground somewhere.
Build their own water.
Why do they have to have purified water?
Exactly.
And we.
They got that water capture facility to hold their water to re, yeah, that's a great.
Maybe they do. And that, that puts that question that, you know, gray shadow to rest that we got the answer rather than.
Excellent point.
So, I just bring it up.
Talk yourselves into a circle there.
Something that's going on. Well, that's what we do, so.
Dan, did you have something else?
Well, I mean, since they're already doing carpet capturing, the Andersons want here, yes, then.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that's a valid point to ask, to see what they use, but until we go, the process, there's a change in the process or they use.
More or less, or?
I wouldn't think it would be, but when they, the super, I don't, there's more water in the process that they need or like.
I mean, I just.
That's what I think, it'd be almost in, in my simple mind, it'd be a net zero, if you're capturing already, or you're capturing. So.
Let's find out.
I mean, if, I got to assume that they would be open to things that would preserve our water supply. If this is all about preserving our environment to begin with, we're capturing carbon, I got to assume that they wouldn't mind preserving other things.
It's not a bad thing to preserve, but I haven't seen Noah's Ark coming up the buoy or anything.
That's true. He wouldn't make it, no.
No, that's just kind of a little nutshell, so.
That's good, thanks, Jean.
I think we'll start the call, Riley, just first, before he break in here.
Yeah, talk to him.
Well, I'll call the Andersons and I'll call Rory and kind of try to get more information on what's going on.
And let's just do a research first. Do some research, I mean, we may not need. You know, a little alert. Nate, I don't know. Anyway, is that all you have, Jean?
Yes, I turned it up.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Um, yeah, break up, bring up a meeting we went to with Terry, Des Moines, for the property tax changes. About House File seven eighteen. Kind of went, I thought it was good, we didn't really get into a lot of specific details, but the overall, maybe you did in the afternoon. More, I mean, you know, kind of got the overall gist of how it's going to affect us. Some of those points, Craig, jump in any time. And I wrote down, they call it the Dirty Thirty, thirty commies that were over the three fifty cap that they're targeting to move down to the three fifty. I thought it was interesting. The growth, if your county valuation growth exceeds three percent, you divide that valuation by a hundred and two percent. If it is over six percent, you divide it by a hundred and three percent. The sweet spot is right under three percent, two point nine nine. And I thought that's kind of interesting, because, you know, you take a county like Dallas County, that'd be growing faster than they can really build roads. Of course, over six percent, they needed extra revenue to build the roads. Now, you're going to stifle their revenue, which is going to stifle economic development. It was showing in the slide, I thought it was interesting. If you're at three fifty and you have a six percent growth, you could actually be reduced under the three fifty, and that is your now cap. So, you could technically go backwards under the three fifty. But to me, really, it's taken, it's another, another way to take our ability to set our levy rate, because now it's based on your calculations. Just kind of wrote, jotted down, the sixty-five-year-old exemption is going to equate to about forty-eight million across the state, and the veteran's exemption is going to be about seven point eight million to start with. You know, rough, I, I've rough ballpark figure, and I bet we could see two hundred, three hundred thousand deficit in our revenue next year because of just those two exemptions.
And we kind of guessed that earlier, too.
Yeah.
So, that was kind of verifying what we'd already guessed.
Without putting hard, you know, putting hard paper on that. And then it was noted, I talked to a few people there when we were reading the legislation, well, there was one, one opposing vote. One, everybody voted for this, now, under truly understanding how even bank of counties, some of the senators, after it got voted on, Senator Rowley, I was told, came and said, well, what's, what's the difference between credit and exemption? Didn't even know. Didn't even know. But, yeah, it'll be interesting going forward. This is good through, I wrote down twenty, two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-eight, and then I'll either have to renew it or change it. April thirtieth is now our budgeting certification deadline. It was said that this is phase one of five phases in property tax changes. I don't, I don't know what they'll do further down the road, but.
Yeah, what else?
And our software companies, you know, they have to implement this stuff. So, you know, when we enter the data in, it calculates and all the good stuff, and that really, there were a few of them there for that meeting too.
When, when Terry, when do they configure the growth for county, like Crawford County, is that done? What was our growth last year? Did we have a three percent? I mean, when do we?
I, we were, we had a very small growth last year, I think, if I remember right.
You're letting me, they say once you've, if you've got. If growth in total value exceeds three percent, then the calculations start. And I just didn't know, when do we even get those calculations? When do we do that?
Well, the assessor does it, and he does it in the beginning. So, like, the taxes that are currently being collected, September twenty-three, March twenty-four, were calculated in twenty-two.
And so, we compared those then to twenty-one, would have that been a three percent growth? Do we, do you know?
I don't know that, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I'm just curious what Crawford County is growing at, if that would affect us or not affect us that much? I mean, it seems like to date's point is it's those counties that are really expanding and.
I think, I think a lot of our growth issue isn't really, doesn't have a lot to do with what we're doing here in Crawford County. I mean, as far as the valuations of our county going up, a lot of that was, you know, from growth outside of here. That's what, remember we, when everybody was grabbing about all these, I went up thirty percent.
They were using the whole state, whole county.
Well, the whole country, the whole country, because housing is so short, the value of everybody's homes went through the roof.
They were getting above asking price for houses.
So, that was really the thing that drove this valuation increase, which is the, you know, that's what's going to drive what, what we're, what we're going to get here. I mean, so three percent, we might only have three percent growth or less here in Crawford, but our valuations increased because of things that are going on outside here. I mean, there's been a lot of growth in the Des Moines area and that, you know, in all the big cities, and that's where they focus their energies on infrastructure, so that's where all the growing happens. I mean, it'd be different if we were growing here, and we'd have the, the tax base, but we don't.
From the valuation increase can get you over the three percent.
Right, exactly.
So, it's not new construction, it's not new growth.
It's not actual growth here that's going to end up screwing it.
And to me, it's going to leave us with two options. Let's say we have limited growth, or even if we are under three percent, but the revenue with the, loss of revenue with the exemptions leaves us short from the previous year in our budget. We have two options, either spend the money out of our general fund, or you cut departments.
That's the thing, it's probably going to have to happen. There's only two options.
Did they say that like that, or is, they did say?
Well, I mean, I'm talking to ISAC staff and that, I mean, what else are you going to do? If you have.
Sensible, thank you.
Right, if you don't have the revenue, you spend, I mean, you have your general fund or you cut. Yeah, that's it.
And your general fund, you start using that, you're going to end up cutting anyway, because that ain't going to last forever.
Exactly, because you don't have any reserves and.
And now, what happens if you do have something that you need, desperately need money for?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly.
But then when, when farmers at the coffee shops type, say, hey, in the spring of the year, I can't get feed to my hog barn or get grain out, where's the rock?
Can't afford it.
Can't afford it, we don't have the revenue.
And they're going to wonder why, because their taxes keep going up.
When they come in here and, you know, want to go get, I mean, just, it's going to affect everything we provide Des Moines.
Well, then at some point, through all that, it should get back to Des Moines, because they're the ones that are pushing these things.
Right.
So, it may be, maybe study their voting characteristics a little more in November when it comes.
Which, just like everything else.
June and November.
Well, yeah, June and November.
It has to break, and in that period of time when it's broken and, and people are suffering, that test period is that tough one, oh, that doesn't work. There's people that have lost things over this experiment that they've done, and I feel sorry for that period of time while they're figuring out it doesn't work.
No, health, journal, the. Part of the experiment.
I'm always thinking about how, how, just since I've been on this board, and all of the changes.
Since you've been on, there's been a lot of change.
There has been.
I sure hope this wasn't more. I sure hope this wasn't normal. We've been pretty damn busy.
It's been unreal, the things, but did they give any clue on what else is coming down the pipe? You know, when they say it's uh phase one of five phases, I would hope they would give you a little bit of a clue what else is coming.
House File seven eighteen.
You know, I'm guessing it's the governor's and the wish to be the California, the Midwest, growing all those business and stuff. I, I mean, she's not a secret about she wants to grow.
She wants to grow our, our business base.
Right.
And and if you don't have all these extra taxes, I mean, it's basically got, I, I think her theory is that you'll have a little bit of a hard time why that business is coming. You know, or your taxes are lower, but if our taxes, I mean, that's what, that's why, that's why Austin is booming. Texas has got this zero taxes.
Right, uh, there are people, you know, like River Eight sixty-five, I had some friends that were gonna move to a state where they don't get taxed, you know, so.
Florida.
Don't wanna mention any states, nobody know where they're going, but I just think that they're learning from that and say, well, wait a minute, we want to, older people spend money here too, you know, so we don't want them to leave. We wanna bring new people in, so let's make it more appealing for you to not, you know, spend your retirement in Florida or, you know.
What have they part of it? Sixty-five and over tax.
Yep. I actually had a farmer stop me on the stairs this morning coming in and he was coming in to pay us taxes and he says, what? And, you know, he was talking about how how much they went up. I said, all I would ask for you to judiciously look to see which places are taxing you or because it might not be this bill. That's all I said to him.
My charge will be sitting on that door right now.
But you're right, maybe people need to look at their voting habits, so who they're voting on the hospital board, who they're voting on the school board, you know, all those things that add to the taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying there's good, bad people on them, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you, 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 they're, they're well, because Dan sits here most weeks, I mean, they and sits over at City Hall, they've got an idea what's happening in these board, these rooms. But there's other boardrooms that are deciding taxes in Crawford County that aren't on the news as frequently at least. You see what I'm getting at? I mean, slows, I mean, it is what it is, mind you, but those are some of the things that you may get to point out to your, when you're, when people are biting on you about taxes.
Maybe it is the will of the people to go down this road.
Yeah.
Maybe it is.
Apparently, I mean, because they voted for the, everybody that sits down in Des Moines.
Yep.
You see all the businesses on Broadway.
Apparently, this is the will of the people.
I'm for, I'm for lower taxes, but we still gotta be able to afford to pay for the things that we are. I mean, Dave and I were talking about it before the meeting, you know, I mean, we've got to find more ways and in this county to generate revenue without having to rely on our property taxes. And you know, we talked about it before, Cal, I mean, you know, that got brought up and and where we were thinking that, well, maybe we have to hire a professional grant writer. I mean, there's counties out there that have people on staff. I mean, they got departments that that's all they do is write grants. And, you know, but I mean, that means that there's money out there. So if you, maybe you do that and you offer it to the city people and, and, you know, you basically find ways to make this as an economical way to have this person, but it's somebody that can bring in revenues from outside of our tax base. And then there's other things, you know, like what, we, we had Sherry do some investing for us, you know, to get some more revenues off of interest and what have you.
But it isn't good though, when locally at our level, our throats are cut so much that we can't provide services. But while you see the state collect the majority of the taxes and keep them for themselves and are sitting on two billion dollar rainy day fund that isn't doing anything. But yet we're bare bones here.
I think it's probably getting pretty good interest too.
But you know, I mean, don't, it's gotta be, you gotta have somewhat of equity within all levels of government.
I agree.
We can all provide the services we need to, not just hold it all they want at the state level.
I agree with you, Dave. I think they need to find better ways to work with us instead of just telling us what we're gonna do.
Combine some services instead of, you know, the city has a grant writer, the county has a grant writer, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
People, we've got chief, chief of police, fire, sheriff, you know, try to try to use those resources.
To your point on that, regions, yes, if you can combine and they support your entire region, but what we've run into, look at how our regions operate. How does mental health work? Everybody goes to Sioux City. We're left out in the cold here in rural areas.
Exactly.
You know.
You wanna make sure you know who you're getting in the car with.
Very good.
I, I think a prime example of a region working well is Region Twelve. Six counties and supports everyone very equally, very equally. You look at mental health, who they support? The good old buddy system, the ones that they want to in in Sioux City.
It's, it's, yeah, I think we should probably, Cal, come up and give an update of what's going on in county mental health.
I just like them first.
You guys ever talk about salaries? Reduce the salaries of the federal state?
We have no authority over state or federal salaries.
Yeah, but you guys did it over here. You just, guys take, take us.
We took a zero percent.
We take zero.
You take zero?
That's this table here.
If, if, yes, it could come with it.
Yeah.
Company businesses.
We've actually been trying to, we've actually been trying to prepare for this already, I mean, in previous budgets, so.
It was extremely difficult because of the back the blue that came out, giving the sheriff the big raise and so it's still one county and you give, you know, one person twenty percent raise that in, in the cost of the inflation, it's people kind of go away that cost of living and, you know, are.
But they gave those raises because the sheriffs were giving low pay way back when.
Way back when.
Now he's getting paid that much harder because of the year.
Not yet, not yet.
Oh, yeah.
Well, with this, yeah, if you take the package.
That's way more higher now than was with the regular people that worked here in town.
It's, uh, yeah.
It's a fine line to walk with employees. You gotta pay them so that they can have a living wage and have.
That way of living.
Well, that's, that's a different scenario, but I mean, you're average employee of a.
But that's what you guys have control because the state gives the Iowa's draw up raise.
We were legislated by the state to give the sheriff a raise.
Right, the back the blue. So there, there, go back to your, your state legislators and say, and ask them why they dictated that on us at a local level. We hadn't, our hands were tied on that.
When, when we went to them, they said, oh, no, 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 that's just for the sheriff. It's not for anybody else. It's just for the sheriff. And I said, do you realize what you just did? Because he gives, you know, eighty percent of what he gets and then the people down here are like, well, that's not fair. And we're actually the ones out on the beat, you know, we're getting paid less and yeah, you, you shouldn't sit here during great time.
Okay. You have some other?
Um, no, that was pretty much, and I don't know if you, you do wanna add anything to it, but just what I took.
I mean, the one thing that was in the, the House File seven eighteen was the threshold for bonding requirements did increase thirty percent. Uh, was four hundred thousand, it's now five hundred and twenty thousand. I don't think that had been changed for a long time. Other than that, Dave touched on everything that I had down in my notes too.
Real thorough discussion though, lots of information.
I think it was, I mean, a good turnout, they had good information.
They had a really good turnout, I thought.
Yeah, I did too. Um, they just.
A lot of good questions and, and typical of legislation and legislation that is written by attorneys is that there's even some, I think, disagreement amongst what some things mean.
Right.
By the leadership of, of the Iowa Association of Counties.
Well, you saw that.
Stood up there and said, well, here's what I think. She'd stay up, stand up and say, here's what I think.
That's why they call them opinions.
You know, and so it's not really black and white, what everything means in the bill. Is that the way?
Exactly, because Lucas and the other gal that was up there was it, Carla Becker. I mean, they had disagreements throughout the meeting of how it was gonna affect us.
Right.
Interpretation and opinions, they're titled opinions.
Well, that's disappointing, though, that some senators didn't even know an exemption versus a credit.
And they voted on it.
And they voted on it. And there was one, I don't, I wondered if that person, one person voted against.
They did say who that was, but they did say one, no vote.
Should be in the record.
It should be.
Right. That was.
I think it was somebody over by Iowa City, because I asked the question. That's what's sticking in my head.
I mean.
Because I was disappointed that Rocky didn't even vote against it.
I mean, from what I've heard given
Cause he would.
Some inside information that I am able to glean is that the tax cut issue was legislation driven, not by the governor's office, it was by legislature. The governor had a couple of priorities. She got those accomplished. It was not tax cuts. Tax cuts was driven by the legislature.
It was brought up, the levy rates of three fifty and three ninety-five were set back in the eighties.
Right.
And if you would take eighties to today of inflation, we'd actually be at, I don't know, nine, ten, twelve bucks somewhere in there. But the, the thing is, and Craig and I, we talked about this on the way home, what allowed us to stay in line with inflation was our valuation. So even though we're set at a three fifty, if our valuations kept going up year after year, generated more revenue, so it kept us in line. But now if you're capping our valuations, you're not only capping us at our levy rate, you're capping us at our valuation growth, which is really putting a lid on things for our revenues.
And, and, and I think the, the thing that Dave said that to me was so important is that once you get over that three percent and the calculations jump in, is that if you lose two percent, you lose seven cents, so now your cap is three fifty, it's three forty-three. And three forty-three then is your cap moving forward. So if you jump back, if you go below the three percent, to go to three fifty, you don't get a jump back to three fifty. You're set at the three forty-three. And then you start from there. So you don't, it's not like, hey, this year we were over, so now we're down to three forty-three. Next year we're gonna be under, so we get a jump to three fifty. No, that's not how it works. You're at the three forty-three and that's your starting point moving forward. And so that's the part to me that got it that, wow, if you have a growth, you get cut and you stay there.
Wow. Which is a double edged sword, because now also what we spent on economic development and new growth and all that, so penalizing us to go and find new growth.
Cause there's some things in the budget that aren't statutorily required. So there's gonna be some things you may have to consider.
Right, they talked about moving things.
Other departmental things.
That you've got options, that you can fund things through the supplemental.
Right.
Or the basic is if you're not funding them for the supplemental, you should move those things over.
Right, and there's probably a few things in my office I could move over as far as staff salaries and things like that.
Would there be any benefit?
For elections.
Right. Using supplemental, and this is all, we can talk about it closer to budget time, but thinking, just that I can and talk to you is like maybe taking parts of your budget, parts of everybody's budget and making them into like a one purchasing.
Office supply.
Office budget.
Uh.
Just to try to help compensate.
Right, that won't necessarily move it to supplemental though.
That's what I'm.
There's only certain things that can be spent out of supplemental.
Those are the things that.
Insurance.
And that's, that's Iowa code there. It's in Iowa code.
But that's just kind of a Band-Aid thing where you do that.
Right.
Move everything you can to supplemental and then that fixes it for that year perhaps, but then moving forward, you mine, these are the creative thing, thinking that we're gonna have to have.
I'm not opposed to what you're talking about. I mean, we do need to do more.
Consolidate.
All purchases.
That's what I was saying, you know, if you had a paper in the.
And we do, that, we do purchase paper that way.
Kind of like we did with our, with our IT.
Right, with those printers and stuff.
We got it all, instead of you having a budget, a wide item for that.
Right, my, my one thought, I don't know how it would work out, and I was what I asked, that question on where TIF was, if you could use TIF possibly as a tool, let's say with the pipeline, it comes through, if we could TIF the pipeline to keep our value, which would maybe keep our valuation under that three percent and use it upfront for road projects or things like that. Towers, whatever, you know, and just trying to.
Creative way of looking at things. I mean, because that's, I, I started and I got three question marks and it's just additional sources of revenue for Crawford County. I mean, where did we come up with additional sources of revenue?
Well, Kyle, I think you brought up a good point. I, I, I think budget time though, started already. I mean, I think we've got to start actually looking, because of all these changes, we're, we need to start looking, you know, not wait till January. I mean, we gotta decide, okay, we literally have to cut our budgets. I mean, we gotta know some more from the state yet, obviously, but I mean, do we tell each department, hey, we, you gotta all cut one percent? You know, I'm just throwing a number around, you know, yeah, everybody's gotta cut one.
We had talked about that and I thought that was a good idea. If we get to that point where we're looking at a major deficit revenue.
Then, you know, if it goes five hundred thousand short, I mean, Terry's budget is a portion of that five hundred thousand.
Everybody is.
Sheriff's is gonna be obviously a bigger portion of that. Well, I mean, you do, but put together, that's how I say, you need to cut it back fairly, you cut two percent. If yours is twenty percent, you've got a full twenty percent of.
Yeah, right, good point.
At least you're trying to somehow spread it across the board evenly and fairly.
But to be fair, we need to start that.
We need to start examining.
Until, until session starts up again and they throw face two at us.
That's exactly the, well.
Cloud.
Thanks.
Just like the glitch fix.
If you turn it up.
But we do need to stay on top of them and we hope our population.
Talk to your state legislators and.
Yeah. Anyway.
You don't get full salary?
So we took a zero percent increase.
Zero percent.
Years in our office.
Right.
Yeah.
Hey, pretty good for you guys.
Well.
Well, we were trying to demonstrate a point, but the, uh.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Osman, if you please come forward and present your good morning. Just gonna give you that file. I'm not gonna get done with those, they just, they don't, they're a master of files.
We thought you just scanned them as a.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, yeah. That would never surprise me. There you go.
Thanks.
Let's see. Sorry, too. Yeah, um. I don't know. Do you have a water mine, um, just a water service line, so I need to have you uh, you have to sign those and that's just a one inch water service line. Um, the, uh, bridge project. Tim used to be haunting, it's not even October. They started pouring last Friday, but uh, buying their forms blew out. So they did scrap a phone. Hopefully pouring it this week though, with the forms and your system. So there's four of them. Oh, there's four, yeah, there's four copies there.
I have a feeling that they want the project to be done as well.
This is painful, though.
So are they in the process of working on railings and such, why they're, how does that?
They're working on the grading. Okay, I think they, they really can't load anymore on that until this is in place. Okay, so they're trying to keep things off the anti-conditional weight until that's in place and it's had some time to cure.
Okay.
I think they're working on the approach slabs, but then that gets in the way, you know, the contractors, the grading contractors don't wanna move dirt from one side to the other, so we gotta get this.
So it's kind of, all right, I just.
We, we gotta.
People have asked me and I'm like, well, I don't, there's nothing to them.
Yeah, the grading contractors, they're, they're putting in, they're, they're doing what they can and as soon as this has had cure time on it, uh, then they'll be able to move material from one side of the bridge to the other. You don't really wanna do that on brand new approach slab if you can avoid it, you know, to let all that dirt's moved and everything's placed, then they'll come and put the approach slab in. So that's where we're at. It is painful and we'll get there. So not much we can do at this point, other than just keep moving forward. Um, the, uh, Mall made a shot, nothing new on that. They'll probably be firing up there here in a few weeks. I hope anyhow, getting that done before we get colder temperatures.
When we start hauling dirt?
Uh, where at?
In Primanella, make a shot.
Uh, it's done.
Oh, it is done?
Yes, that's already graded. Yeah, we haven't done, I mean, that's been there several months now. We did that.
No, I thought you were gonna add, have to haul some more.
We haven't done any more in that other lot yet. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done a lot. Yeah, yeah, the new lot, we haven't done anything there, you, you know. We don't wanna do that land transaction until we have a new shop. Now, if they'll allow us to do it, we'll, we'd like to do it this fall, so we're gonna talk to them and see if they're okay with us doing it, even without title changing. Um, but I don't wanna give them title to our building that we're on until we're in the new building. So.
And I think then they understand.
You know, I mean, I, I think we could have a gentleman's agreement, but every time, you know, as soon as you do that, something weird comes up and next thing you know, you've kicked out your own house.
Get rid of gentlemen.
We don't want that. So, so we're just gonna wait. Uh, but we may try to get that in while we're grading down there.
Yeah.
And we're gonna be on T Avenue on that three miles for the rest of the year. So we'll try to haul some in during that time period.
I see a problem with that because they, they want the building, they wanna give us that lot, they're gonna work with us to.
Yep. Yep, and the, you know, so that's kinda where we're at with that, and the, uh. Property transaction out by Highway one forty one, we're supposed to take action on that on the, the second October, and so we should have that and. We'll do a little bit of prep work and get that ready too. You could even move the dirt there temporarily.
Yeah.
We'll probably just. Make you have to move it twice, mind you, but. We'll haul it to the site, I think they'll be okay with it, you just haven't done it yet, and so, yeah. And then it reminds me, if you, if you get a chance to get done, could you or Kyle go down to the shop, the pipe yard with me and just kinda. You know, cause they're coming, the DOT is coming on the thirteenth of October to kind of firm everything up. And I was talking to Tammy yesterday over here and she said, well, they need it all the way back to the chain link fence, that ain't gonna happen.
No, no, no.
Cause that, that basically takes our yard away. You know, so we just need to. Yeah, we just need to do things back, I think, so I wanna make sure, let's just get eyes on it, so we're all in the same picture.
Grab you after our meeting if you're around.
Yeah, just come on down, we'll go down, so, I, I have no problem with that, but we can't.
I remember talking to him, Bill, it was just to move the pipes to the front, to flush with the rack.
Yeah, with the rack, so, yeah, that's, that's something to work with, so. So, yeah, you, you just remember that, so, uh, great crew, uh, they're down on Mill Ridge Road, probably be down there this week and then. I think we're gonna go to that T Avenue, there's three miles, T Avenue there, north of Manella, three, three miles. Um, they wanted to do that when the crops are out, crops are starting to come out, so we're gonna kinda go there and start working on that road, the beans are out, the corn comes out, we'll just. Not go playing, so, they give a place to hunker down in for the next couple months, three miles. So, uh, and then the bridge crew finished up a really nice bridge down there at Buck Grove. A lot of compliments, gonna be happy about that, so, get a chance, we gotta take a look at that, we're done real well, sounds like the. Conservation's interest boasting trust, and so, you know, we got two of them now, we got that one, we got the one sitting up this last week, but. You know, when Tim and I were out there looking at another issue on that bridge that crosses over the lake, we found another bridge, just a. Pedestrian, you know, trail bridge, it's in really tough shape, so this might be a good opportunity, I think, sneak that one in there. And, uh, and get a, a, uh, another nice bridge out there.
Excellent.
So, yeah, you'll just have to kinda.
Yep.
Conservation, figure out when we wanna do it, and we wanna schedule that in, that's not usually a like, nice fall project, but. There's not a lot of, a lot of park.
I know, that's the meanest half, rough estimate of what your cost would be, or.
Couple hundred thousand per kitchen. You want a ballpark?
Big ballpark.
I mean, it probably would be more equal to the Nelson's Park.
Yeah.
Cause I think that's what we kinda.
It's county, county, we're not.
Right.
We are, use. Good flank in there and, that'd take a lot of materials, so, it's a nice property, those are nice, fun to do, so. The preservation of the old bridge, so.
Good.
Suppose keep that, might, might be this fall, maybe next fall, I don't think there's any real burning sense of urgency, but. Perfect, so, um, but yeah, take a look at those two bridges that went off. Highway fifty nine on W Avenue, real nice respan, as they did there, and the one on that, down at Buck Grove, and so. They're a little patching now, some cold repaired, and we're gonna go over on our avenue and do another one, so, guys are doing awesome. Fun to see, yeah, yeah. Which one's fifteen, off fifty nine you said? W Avenue, just, just west of fifty nine. So. Yeah, just, just west of Hills, yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, our guys are cranky, and they'll get a full slate of stuff for next year too, so. Broside guys seeding, going, so, and it's gonna, you need to kinda keep cranking away there, our new mower tractors out on the road. Uh, gotta try to mow all the roads, you got a level piece that we created this year, which is something I don't normally do, but. We'll have three mower tractors, we're just gonna put them out there, once they get done seeding, we'll, we'll have another guy on a mower tractor, finish it up, so. Hey, before you move on to your motions, I want to, thanks for going out and cleaning up dirt to the Dallas City Tower, so that really looked nice. But I mean, they weren't, they weren't even done yet, boy, oh, boy, did that really improve everything out there, now that'll. It'll make it, I already let, uh, Jeff know that that's all cleaned up, so it'll make fencing everything out there mu- much easier than all work, so thank you very much. Yeah, good, no problem.
Good crew.
Guys do a good job. You know, Tony hasn't been in that excavator that long, he's doing a really good job at making the ditches, we, we ate some of that yesterday.
Yeah.
So, uh, good, good group of guys, uh, did some good stuff there, so. Uh, in a report, uh, you don't really need to approve this, but I always kinda like to just. Let you know about it, it's just a summary of what we did last year, the last fiscal year, you summarize the expenses and the, uh, revenues.
You submit that to us or you submit that to DOT?
It goes to DOT, so really, this is kind of legislatively driven, okay, they wanna collectively. See what is going on in the state, where the money's being spent, that type of thing, where the revenues are coming from. Yours is a little thicker than most counties I saw. Well, I mean, your bigger counties are dealing with bigger dollars, you know, your bigger urban counties, but yeah, I mean, we, you know, we've got. Twelve point six million dollars revenues to, you know, that's the beginning balance plus the receipts. And about that, you don't have that much offset with your ending balance and your expenditures, um, you know, that doesn't include the three and a half million dollars of. Construction that doesn't go through here, you know, the, the paving project, the bridge project, that, that's farmer market or, or bridge money that. Is our accounts that are managed at. So, that money does go through the, the local budget, so, yeah, so it's about a fifteen million dollars. I talked to other supervisor, just don't seem like they're secondary, it's some as busy as ours. The one call people, like, they'll tell you for sure, that there's no other county doing as much as we.
Oh, would it work the opposite way, like, if the one where, the one city covers so much of the county in Polk County, then. That's all under the city engineers, your budget work, yeah, less outlining county part of it.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know, you know, I've never really looked at Polk County.
I just got curious.
How, you know, how that, you know, certainly there's an urban influence there, probably more Pedro's, more subdivisions that they have to deal with than. Than we do, I mean, I really like Crawford County, they don't have to deal with all that drama, uh, you know, it's, it's manageable and peaceful.
Right, most of the time.
Most of the time, um. Trade seats for a week? I spent a week in the forest of Oregon, Washington, I have no desire to go around. And I came back with poison oak, so, uh, but, uh, no, it, uh. Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's just different, but I think it's, it's counties in our demographic are a role setting, I think we do a lot of work. We get a lot done here, you know, relatively speaking.
I think we do.
Yeah, uh, you know, and, and our job is to always try to, you know, manage resources as cost effectively as possible.
Right.
And getting that, you know, you talked about, we're talking about that yesterday, how to bring additional revenue, you say, well, that's great, you know, that's. That's revenue sources that you have to competitively apply for and try to get, which is acceptable and. You know, getting the three million dollars for the bridge out here and working on getting a three and a half for the bridge over south of Vale, so we posted that bridge. Yeah, if you noticed, it's posted.
When you look at, we were just talking earlier about our House Bill seventy eighteen and the property tax changes, it's a slap in her face when they say. You locally are spending, have a big inflated budget, and you look at what we're doing exactly with secondary roads and. How efficient we are and the work we're getting done and the things that we're providing.
Yeah.
And then to be told that we're overspending and that.
I, I was so frustrated with the State Senate group's comment was to that effect too, and, and reached out and said, that's, that's not the case in Crawford County. You know, they kind of, well, that may not be the case there, but it is in other areas, but then just don't paint us all the same color.
Right.
Okay, you know, we are trying, I think, and I know in my department, we are trying to leverage and manage the resources. The one, the one thing I came back from Naco that just hits that on the button, and. The lady that was the president last year is the one that said it, she stood up there and she said, if you've seen one county, you've seen one county. Cause we're all different. We're all different, yeah, yeah, and, you know, and so, you know. And the dollars are gonna go up, the dollars that we spend have to go up, you can't go through a, a hyperinflation period. And not spend more dollars, it just happens, I mean, everything is going up and our costs will too, these numbers will be higher. They have to be, when you spend eight hundred thousand instead of three hundred seventy five thousand. And still trying to get the same amount of work done, you know, I mean, we have less people, you know, not having three full-time positions is a quarter million dollars a year. When you put everything together, that's how much that saves us, and we don't have those, we haven't had those now for a couple of years. You know, and those are the kinds of things that you have to do, you know, but fortunately, the revenues have, have ticked up as well. And, 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 and that's, that's part of inflation as well, is that they have to go down. And so, uh, you know, so that's helped us, and I've said, if your, if your costs continue to go up. And revenues decline, that's, that's when trouble starts to happen, and you gotta really dig deep and figure out what you're gonna change, but, you know. All we can do is manage the money that we get. I don't think anybody that owns a business is already dealing with that. Yeah, and, and so. But I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we get that big SS four A grant, cause that would be a big. Long term for us. I hope so, I actually split a candle for that. Yeah, yeah. Well, and all we can do is try, I mean, if we, if we don't, we don't, but it sure would be nice if we did, so. Uh, but anyhow, there's really, you know, nothing here, you don't sign this, you don't do any, I sign and send it in, but it's praying to you to talk about it and.
This chair, I'll make a motion, I'm gonna buy the number four.
Okay, a motion was made by Mister Mobile, signed by Miss Hayden, the motion, uh, for motion to approve the annual report from the county engineer. Fiscal year ending in June thirtieth of twenty twenty three, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of states, somebody saying aye. Oppose no, chair votes. I'm just gonna say, if anybody ever wants to copy to look through. I would like. There you go. I'm going my stack, so you're all welcome to. Yeah. A little light, a little light reading, uh, the, uh, the next item that the DOT detoured so. You, you're probably familiar with that bridge just south of town, there are highway fifty nine, it's, uh, right here, okay? And so they, apparently they got their final design, there was piling issues and they couldn't. What they intended to do, which is keep road open to traffic, did most of the private. So, they're gonna do a D tour, remember here a couple of years ago, we had this culvert out right here, that where the schoolhouse used to be, and then they detoured on. The U fifty nine over and up, well, you know, nobody uses that, they all come up here, and they're gonna probably do the same thing. This time now, this is gonna push them a little bit further, but still, if the, the through traffic is gonna figure this out within the first few days. And they're gonna try to come up here, and then they're gonna try to jock you around here, you know, I mean, you know, here they won't come in there, but that's what they're. But they're probably gonna. Yeah, they're, they're, they're probably gonna come up, you know, so. I kinda dug my heels in a little bit with the DOT, but at the end of the day, you gotta play the game.
Yeah.
You gotta work the big shit we need there to eat right now, you know, for this bridge here, you know, we're using this. We're using that road for our detail, uh, but I've asked them to come down, you know, and I actually added the word. The wording onto the agreement, and I'll see what they say, but dust control on gravel roads is needed.
Especially with this.
They did the last time, they were really pretty good about the last time, but you know, we got a lot of trouble right here. Especially in that first mile on the south thing, you know. First mile, first cut. You gotta work with them, you know, I mean, we're all kinda didn't get it together, um, not terribly excited about it, we were really hoping that there were other options. But it doesn't appear that there are. They're gonna try to do sixteen weeks, they think it can be done in six weeks, so that'll be.
Hopefully it all goes well.
We're knocking a lot of their arm.
Yeah.
So they can't do it like they did now on fifty nine, where half and half.
This is gonna be a, a culvert structure.
That's not a, that's an, I mean, a box culvert, that's pretty.
Pretty usable tire. Yeah, so, uh, anyhow, and again, this isn't really need your signature, but I want. It'll be next year sometime, but they don't have a start date yet, you know, that issue, you let it.
Be nice to avoid the fall of the year, I guess, when guys are hauling grain and.
Yeah. I just, it, it says here, whereas the DOT agrees to perform the following pre-detour maintenance, if any, all painting and signing will be up to M E T C D standards. Patching requests has also been made, this is there in Dow City where they turn and they go down to highway thirty.
Yep.
And I just added dust control on gravel roads is needed. Let's see if they sign it.
Why make a motion to prove that, put that, move it in there, second.
My motion was made by Mister Scholz, signed by Mister Dozar. Uh, to sign the agreement with Iowa DOT, initiate the detour of primary highways onto local roads. Highway fifty nine detours south of Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of states, somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, chair votes. And then, uh, safety meeting. Yeah, it's really hard to get speakers for some of these things, I don't want this to be a real long grown up thing, but we're gonna start at ten thirty out of Yosemite Park, and they have. Kind of more of a get, fit together luncheon type thing, you know, so you're all welcome to come out. Eleven thirty, twelve o'clock, we'll be eating, so if anyone else is coming out, getting a sandwich, you're working well.
Who are you getting for, you don't know yet for a speaker?
Uh, I'm gonna do a chainsaw safety video and a snow removal safety video, and I think we're gonna try to get the fire chief to come out and do something on fire extinguishers. So, yeah, there's a Tim's training, which you're probably traffic incident management, we're gonna try to work that in this winter sometime. And then we'll do some work zone safety.
You know, it's nice in my travels that our guys have had that training, they may, they may not be a hundred percent track, but they're a good eighty-five percent. To ninety percent, then you get in other counties or jurisdictions and it's, why are you guys not even been run over yet?
They don't need to put anything out?
I don't.
Hop over hill, they're like.
Dudos to you for bringing that to the employees.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, first time I sat through it, I don't know how silly it was, but. When I, on Buckrow Highway, we were cutting trees and the state trooper ran right past our flagger. That's what happened, I mean.
Training modules, okay, which are kinda, you know, I like to have people speak.
It's more personal, I think.
Yeah, and we had, you know, we, one time we had a guy from Steel King come and talk about chainsaw safety, and that was awesome. You know, he had the chainsaws there and he was doing all the things, but don't do that anymore, you know, Cole would just change a lot of the stuff. As far as getting people to come out and speak, so, but, we're gonna do what we can, uh, ten hour workday. There's nothing but good things from the guys, you know, you've heard that, you know, they're really happy with it, so that's good, you know, we wanna do things to kinda. I'll keep your employees happy.
If I've heard anything, they wanna extend it, have a longer period of.
They, they do, but it just, it's too dark in the morning.
I was just having, looking at the last week or so, that, pretty dark, yeah, at six thirty.
It is, yeah, we had to change, it, it worked out, the timing was about right, so, so I think it was a good move, they liked it. And it seems to have worked out well, and, and I, I really do think that especially the bridge crew and the great crews are more productive. That has to make a shelter out. Yeah, that would be to close shelter out of Yosemite, yeah, um. A little bit on some of the equipment, um, the, uh. We had trouble with, with one of the motor graders, getting a motor grader, I don't know, I talked to you guys about steering, you know.
I thought we took it out and they got.
Yeah, it, it should be back now, it was supposed to come back to you yesterday, the day, but they had to get a new harness in it, but. You know, then we took the Dozer up there and apparently here last week, they had cat engineers out there scouring all over this thing, trying to figure out this air conditioning. Problem, and so we have got a resolution with that, haven't heard, but. I liked your resolution, take that one back with them and bring. I don't think that'll happen. Certainly it'll be a good case study for them to try to figure out what, what it is, but, uh. And then, uh, our dump truck, our single axon dump truck is getting painted, so that should be here in the next week or so. Uh, so it'll be ready for the season for snow removal, uh, working to get. Uh, working to get pricing on two new Mack trucks that wouldn't be in fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Hopefully we can afford it.
Yeah, well, I think so. What what is? Is it, is it? They'll just depress you, but you need to have a sit-down with them so you understand what's coming.
We think our. Our new exemptions could cost us three plus three, three hundred K plus.
Well, we just won't do things.
Right, we're trying to prepare already, so.
We just won't do things, you know, they, if that's, you know, for us, we can stop grading. You know, that's an improvement. I I, you know, I suppose. Move the snow off the road, play the gravel roads, all gravel, keep the pavement safe. That's the bare minimum, but it does move you forward. Just as another one that the uh, the Steel Co. found by uh, on an abandoned road, if you have spent. Getting a lot of good feedback.
People in the town are going out to drive.
The next place is the Steel Co.
Oh, there's several.
We've got a list, I think.
You know, and I think, you know, we need to fundamentally just look at it shift. So maybe the grading projects now just start kinda shifting. You know, still do some, but.
What's the chance you could get a grant for the equipment necessary to do that?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, for us to do it, it would be, you you know, that's something we really gotta kind of decide whether we wanna invest in the equipment. But again, the grant, the grant, if we get the grant, you know, that's gonna free up farmer market money. That you know, that you can start to do some of these things on a farmer market road. Just do a letting.
Just trying to find ways to make that stretch out even further.
Yes, we just cross our fingers and see what happens there, but. You know, and and that could be a bit of grading expense. Yeah, it turned out nice. The heat of that, though, is remember, as we sat here to talk, you have to have a base to put it on. And that's the heat of that. If we, they hold all that size out of there the day or two after we did it, it didn't affect it at all because there's twelve inches of base. So.
Okay, next on our agenda is to discuss and take action. Crawford County Courthouse renovation proposal request. Three R, I don't have my readers on. Anyway, Brittany. Oh, there she is. Thank you. The floor is yours, ma'am, if you'd like to present your.
Yeah, um, so just kind of a little bit reminder. So we had a proposal request number one, that was with the doors. We decided to go with getting, keeping the existing doors, so the no cost change. Last time I came in front of you, we did approve uh, proposal press number two, um, which was um, wall adjustments, um, several different walls between insulation and failing uh, plaster, and so that was uh, just over five thousand dollars. So that's where we are today. And we did have a twenty thousand dollar allowance put into the project. Um, so what we started discussing last time, but we didn't know the end result was part was to replace the ceiling in the kinda U-shaped out behind the elevator. So we started with getting the price with that, um, and then kind of an all option in that was to replace the lighting in that ceiling also. Or are we gonna use the existing lighting and could we get the lighting in time? Um, and then another part that I didn't know last time we were there is we discovered that your existing restrooms had no vent stack. And our, the plan was to attach into those vent stacks, so we were in the discovery mode of how to get for to meet today's code that this plumbing needed vent stack. Um, we were able to can kinda combine these two, uh, because in this space right here, um, just to the south of it, there's actually a vent stack that we could tap into. Um, which actually forces us to replace the ceiling out here. Um, so we have at the end of that proposal you can see a drawing, um, where we're venting, we're gathering all the family and men. All the vent stacks, we're bringing it over to this corridor and down. The women, we're gathering them all. They're coming together. And then these two are coming together, um, there are two inch lines that are then transitioning into a three inch line. Um, going through this wall and connecting into um, existing six inch waste stack that we can tap into. Um, so that doing that forces the ceiling to come out. We did combine the two of those. Um, and but we did leave the option for the contractor to replace the lighting or keep the existing lighting. Um, this ceiling, because of getting the vent piping down, does need to be lowered across, we're guessing roughly about six inches. Um, which did affect some of the socket work uh, that's here, so we have them lowering the sockets um, around this area and um, doing a little additional work on these doors. That way we can get this all to work. Base, uh, so minimum just to do the remove the coastal ceiling tile, um, reuse the existing lighting and exit signs, uh, do the framing and drywall for those sockets and get a new ceiling and then do the vent piping. That came in at eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Which if you would do that, mix adding to the price request number two that has already been approved, that reduces thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars of the twenty thousand dollar contingency. Or option two is doing all the same things. The only difference is putting new light fixtures that would match what we're putting inside the restroom. Um, the light fixtures that were chosen are readily available. Uh, once they get approval on this, they can get them ordered and they can have them here in a couple of weeks. So we would have like the new light fixtures here on site. Um, and they would install those directly. Those light fixtures add a thousand dollars, uh, roughly. So, um, that would bring it the new contingency total that we would use out of the twenty thousand up to fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
We're pretty much done with all destruction though, aren't we? You know, the digging in, David, we're pretty much done with all that, aren't we? So I mean, our chance for new expenses to pop up are are getting lesser.
Yeah. Now that they have the underground dugout stuff, really, we're, we're just putting all the new stuff in.
Think we'd fall short by not putting in new lights.
I agree.
And it was always kinda dull down there. I mean, it wasn't great lighting. I think you do. I move, we do option two for additional cost of nine thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Motion was made by Mr. Dozard, second by Ms. Hayden to uh, go with option number two. Oh, she erased it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm doing better reading, Brittany, at a distance. I got different eyes now. Anyway, so option number two. With the brand-new lighting, nine, there there, there you go, nine thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and no cents. You get that, Madam Mother? Stole long enough for you? Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no, chair votes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, bye-bye.
All right, next on our agenda is uh, discuss and take action. Ruth Hernandez. Uh, parcel number zero three, one nine one, zero nine, zero zero three, tax abatement of, oh my. Evangelical? Jesus S. Camino Inc. Well, I'm doing good without my readers, so. Yeah. So I have at least a moderate excuse. So anyway, uh, Sherry, did you have anything else on this here issue? I mean, it's an abatement.
There's some extra information on all of that.
Okay. This one.
There you go.
We had to wait for the new taxes.
We had to wait for the new taxes.
Yes, uh, well, we didn't get our statement. I had to call you to request it and I did receive it through email. Um, I just went downstairs and changed the uh, the P O box as well, so we could get our, whatever information needs to be ta- uh, given. Uh, for the church in a P O box for the church and no other address.
And the total amount of abating would be?
Now you're.
I'm not seeing what we're looking for here. Talking of manure management. You got manure management plan?
That was what we were waiting for.
All right, there we go.
All right.
Okay.
Kind of recaps all of the conversations that we've had.
It's got it in there, to be honest. Is it just the new tax amount? Is that what we're talking about? It's eleven hundred twenty-six dollars. The newest tax. That's on this tax statement. Is that what you have too?
Yes.
The to- full year. Is that what you're talking about doing is abating the whole year?
Abating that full year, that was, that was what our objective was, or we had to get them numbers, correct?
And she's got all of her uh, status changed and all the things that were.
So has has she met all the obligations of the treasurer's office?
She didn't have any obligations to meet for me.
Assessor to get it up.
And there's no penalty or interest or anything like that because it's current?
And you've already filled out.
Cause that's current.
For future.
So there's no, there's no penalties or anything, where that's all paid current? Okay. So then the motion, we would, we would entertain a motion to abate this year's taxes in the amount of
eleven hundred twenty-six dollars.
Okay, eleven hundred twenty-six dollars. Okay. So who, Mr. Dozard makes the motion, second by Ms. Hayden to abate these taxes for this year.
And that's something that's standard operating procedure, I guess, for churches in Crawford County. They all share in that same exact.
That's what I wanted to know. Yeah, no, you filled out the forms with them. You should be exempt as long as you are, continue to be a church.
I would happen to do this because
The timing of the filing of that exemption.
Confusing on the dates where it has to be done because the tax year doesn't run concurrent with what the actual.
There's a lot of confusion. We got it cleaned up.
Cause it just feels like you're a part of this board.
Focused and uh, and here we are, so.
I do really appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thank you for your patience. Okay, all in favor, is there any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no, chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Spread the word. Okay, next on our agenda is uh, maintenance contracts. Dave, would you come forward so you can kind of brief us on these two different maintenance contracts and uh, give us your uh, opinion on what you've uh, discovered?
Um, I guess I don't have a copy, but that's fine. Um, I'm good.
No, they aren't in. Got him?
The two service contracts, first one we got was from TK Elevator in Omaha, Nebraska. Their service contract was so tilted toward them, but they basically tied our hands that we had to use them. And I think some of the verbiage even was if we got somebody else to come in and do it, they would still get paid for doing the job. They got no pay. I mean, it was terrible. I've never seen Yeah, well. I mean, it just, it basically tied our hand. They had the okay, if we had somebody else come in and look at it, they had the okay, all kinds of stuff and everything. I even took it over to Colin, cause I was like, holy Mac. I mean, he said there's nothing illegal with what they're doing, but it's not very actual ethical and stuff. So I got a second opinion from Schumachers. They're the ones that saved us money over at the annex when we fixed the elevator over there and stuff and everything, so. Uh, I figured give them a shot and they now have an office out of Omaha. They're basically based out of eastern Iowa, but now they've got um, an office in Omaha. I think what it is, is a lot of people that were tired of working for TK have now gone to work for Schumachers. Now they've got an office over there. And as far as the service contracts, my personal opinion is that we would be money ahead if we did the upper one. Because the basic one, the bronze one, or whatever they're, however they're categorizing them, is basically just come inspect, loop stuff as needed, you know, just a visual checkover. It's not very extensive coverage or anything like that. There's nothing really covered, so you'd still be paying, um, I don't know, I'd have to.
This is TKE, this is bronze. I don't think.
I think they're just.
Schumacher doesn't label theirs the same.
Yeah, um.
Schumachers would just solve coverage, wouldn't it? Are you paying for it as you go, or how's that work with them?
Well, it's. Yeah, there's, well, there's a monthly charge.
Or retainer kind of.
Been lost since I looked at this one, but basically with the all-inclusive one, because like right, like when our elevator broke here, it was thirteen hundred dollars for TK to come up and reset stuff.
Just drive it up here.
Just to, basically just to drive up, reset things and then go back.
Those are.
That's TK.
Yeah. Oh, this is just, this is just oil and grease. This is the more preventative plan and.
So, three fifty-four per month, thousand sixty-two for um, quarterly. So you're looking at forty-two hundred dollars a year. And the TK one for there, the posted one, I think was closer to five thousand dollars a year, remember.
Better contract and it's less money.
Yeah.
There are no prices on TK eight?
I'm not, well, I know they had a price someplace, but I'm not seeing it on this one. So me like Schumacher. Smart one to go with. And right now, um, I'm holding on. There, we've had that elevator acting up over at the annex. And uh, um, I'm with two of the service contact.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Schumacher at the
At the complete. It's called complete preventative maintenance for hydraulic elevators. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion was made by Mr. Mobergh, second by Mr. Schultz to use the complete preventative maintenance program with Schumachers. We have any further discussion?
I'll just say that we view Schumacher at our church. With our elevator.
Good, glad to know.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no, chair votes aye. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate you doing all that.
People love wanting to get in there.
Okay. Let's see, where are we at? Okay, tax, tax abatement, discuss and take action. Twelve or twenty-six, twelve Idlewood Drive, Dennison, John V. Lally the fourth and Tina Miller.
He had a conference.
Existing foundation.
The only thing I wanted to add is that the address is Idlewood Circle. The only thing I wanted to add is that the address is Idlewood Circle. Where they're at, it's not Idlewood Drive. So that should be changed, I guess, if we put that.
So they're probably going for the three years.
And out of your neck of the woods.
That's kind of out of my neck of the woods. I don't have a paperwork going up here. They tore the old one down, all that, all the way. So it's just vacant.
Sure, we can assume all of the paperwork is in order and all of that.
No, it's not coming up or.
I mean, I'll get Dwayne up here. Just jump ahead.
Let's go to Sherry's, yeah. Here, if you'd come forward, please, um, your D, DSC credit. Come on, go back to the discussion.
Okay, really, so um, mine, mine is a little bit unusual. I brought Amy in case you guys had some real questions because she's the one that's really been working on this a lot. So the state has an elderly and disabled property tax credit that people come in and apply for in our office. This is separate from the one that the assessor's office did. Um, they came in and applied and when I was at ISAC, um, a few weeks ago, uh, some of the treasurers were saying that they thought that the software had incorrectly figured these amounts. So I got ahold of Amy. She started digging into it a little bit more and we found out that the tax statements we sent out were also incorrect. And it affects about seven people, so it's not a lot.
So only people that had this credit, it affected?
Yes, yes. The, the thing about it is, is these are people that already have a hardship. And when we originally figured it, it told us that it was going to be nine thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Okay. We found out the software made an, it made a mistake.
The lock on the bottom of the gun, thank you.
Amy went and reprocessed it and found out that it's only a hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. So it went from nine thousand six forty-five down to one hundred and forty-nine dollars. So it was a large error for seven individuals. And, and that's a very, that's quite hardship for these people is what we're saying. So what we're asking, um, Amy and I talked about this a little bit, and we are just asking the board if we can give these seven individuals until March now to pay their taxes without penalty. Because we sent out these statements saying you only have to give me this much money in September and this much till, till March. So they've probably budgeted for that and now we're coming back telling them we need quite a bit more money.
So that's over a thousand dollars average.
Yeah, right, right.
And that has it all figured out. You guys can look through any of this. I feel like it's probably more information than you want to see, but you're welcome to.
So it was part of the program.
It was the programming error.
And no fault of their own.
Yeah, I, I think giving them time is.
These, these individuals aren't people that typically don't pay their taxes on time. You know, it's not like they're habitual. Um, but we just feel like in fairness to our.
So in previous years, it, it didn't happen or?
It's a newer program. It's a newer calculation.
Yeah, is that over seventy low income? So if you don't qualify, if you're under, over sixty-five and make less than twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars a year, you can qualify for a certain percentage of a thousand dollars assistance. Well, there's the, there are these people that are between between twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars a year and two hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level. So they extended it. So it's people over the age of seventy that if your household is one person, you make less than thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars a year. If you're two-person household, you make less than forty-two thousand dollars a year. So it's these people that fall in between, they're over seventy, but make less than the two hundred and fifty percent federal poverty level. Only seven people in our county qualified. And in the long run, when the calculations were right, only two people actually got credit. One of them seriously only got thirty-two dollars credit, but her taxes are going from, we asked her to pay a hundred and twenty dollars for the year. And now she's got to pay two thousand dollars for the year. And that's why we don't want to penalize them for that.
Gotcha.
Mistake. I mean, that was massive. I mean, that's, that's massive.
We had one yesterday to pay and she was very upset, which understandably so.
So we sent out a letter or something letting them know that they have a little bit longer?
So Amy drew up a letter and we held off on sending it because in our letter, we'd like to say this is a programming error. We've got it corrected. This is now your new tax amount because this was no fault of your own. We are, we want to work with you on payments or whatever and no penalties will be charged unless payments not received by the end of March.
Sounds good. We've done some similar to other people in the past when the, the fault has been determined not theirs. We've let the penalty interest go as long as they get it done. I'll make a motion to make that happen.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Mr. Schultz and second by Ms. Hayden to excuse any penalty and interest. And as long as they're made, the payments are made by the end of March.
Right, right. This would be substantial for folks making less than two hundred and fifty percent below the poverty level of Crawford County.
But we didn't send the letter out because we didn't want to.
So the question that I have is how, who would, how do they determine where the income is at? How is that being done at the state level? To how, how.
The poverty levels?
How do they, how do you know these?
They, um, the federal poverty level is turned over to the Department of Revenue and they list everything out. It's a Department of Revenue form that everybody uses to apply. Um, we do ask them that they turn in their ten ninety-nine SSAs that they get. We ask to see their pensions, any of these dividends, interest, we, W twos. We ask them for all of that. We recalculate so we know that.
Because people don't add and subtract real well sometimes.
So we double calculate and if I get numbers different than what they got, Sherry calculates it a third time. So we really are.
Very diligent.
We're very diligent about making sure it's right. So that's when this happened. This was devastating.
All right, uh, all in favor state so by saying aye. Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you ladies. Appreciate you looking after our folks. All right. Dwayne's here now, so let's move back to the tax abatement on twelve, twenty-six, twelve Idlewood Circle, Dennison, Iowa.
So this is a um, property out in Northwood Edition, right north of the city limits. And uh, if you remember right, uh, about January second or third, the house had a the damaging fire. And so since then, they have removed all of the wood framing of the structure and all that's there is the concrete walls, basement floor. And so they have applied for a building permit to rebuild the house, quoting somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They um, do have their building permit and they did a application for tax abatement for the three-year.
Okay.
I think it's great that they're rebuilding, so I'll make that motion.
Ms. Hayden has made the motion. Mr. Schultz seconds for the three-year one hundred percent on the property that will be located at twenty-six, twelve Idlewood Circle, Dennison. John P. Lally the fourth and Tina Miller.
Does that need to be changed officially to circle rather than drive?
Greg said.
Maybe in the minutes.
Right, exactly, as long as it is in the minutes.
All right, very good.
You can't change the agenda anymore.
Right, okay. All in favor state so by saying aye. Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Here for the new building. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the potential burn ban for Crawford County. Use your name. Right, if you've done board.
We talked about this a couple, three weeks ago and you'd contacted all the fire departments and they're in favor of it. Of course, then we get rain, which is great.
Yeah.
Not a lot of rain.
No, in the million. This is somewhat. After.
Thank you.
Start Thursday at eight o'clock in the morning, this coming Thursday at eight o'clock in the morning, then go tell, rescinded.
This coming.
Pens and needles all there.
Well, there was at least three fires.
Three yesterday.
Yeah, yeah.
Charrope had a combine fire Saturday, Saturday, so I mean.
I did. I had a little spot on the ground, smoldered in the bean field. I wanted to put it out with the fire station.
Well. So, yeah. And I mean, it's not your fault. That, that's gonna happen.
Those are gonna happen. It's trying to prevent the unnecessary stuff.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, in the cities, we can't do anything about, because they have their own ordinances.
I think everybody saw.
With your uh, blessing, I mean, go ahead and all the fire chiefs, they were all.
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion to approve the burn ban.
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Bullbauer, seconded by Ms. Hayden. Any further discussion?
We potentially have pretty significant possible rainfall this weekend.
That's what it takes to get rain.
Yeah, 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 we could use three to five inches.
And you know, you still got all that dry residue out in the fields, no matter what you do. I mean, the wind will dry that up and you get, you get rain all week. Be dry by Monday.
It just helps. I think dirt's drying up and burning right now.
And the second thing that I handed out, um, I was up at uh, Cherokee with the governor and we presented that our region, that's just region threes. Those are all the, the uh, money that we've gotten from the federal government. And since two thousand and eight, that does not include the ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-three, ninety-six floods. The money that we've gotten. But if you go all the way across and look at how much our share was, we're at sixty thousand. Most of those are six hundred to a million that they've had to put in to receive the money that they receive. So our ninety million looks pretty damn good.
Right.
And that's, that's because we have to have our plans up to date, which I do. And if we don't, then we don't get the money.
Good job.
So, just wanted you guys to be aware since it's, since it's, it's be nice to your emergency manager.
All right, well, good job.
Basically.
All right, well, thank you for that. Okay.
We got a vote yet.
Any other, any, any other discussion on the burn ban? All in favor state so by saying aye. Opposed, no. Chair votes aye.
I'd heard you guys talked about the, our budgets coming up and you know, I'm, I can be good if you get our stuff. And that might be considered by less two to three hundred thousand, so that should help with our. Appreciate that, our buddy. Problems.
Thank you.
Well, that's part of the plan we've got ahead.
But we still gotta get our towers finished, but we'll get.
Yeah, yeah, I, um, I think they're gonna be here either this week or next week to finish up or you kind of, just the generators and then we'll be done with, with.
How long before they come yet?
With them.
Have you heard?
He's got, he's got our statements. Let's see, we'll, we'll have, I think maybe I'll get you and maybe Kyle and we'll have a meeting before.
But there's something hanging on Charrope Tower, right? Looked like there's something hanging off there. Maybe just a bracket for an ice bridge or something.
That could be.
The other day I was looking at that.
Yeah.
The ice on the roof.
They got nothing else to do. They just lean back and listen to the radio.
I forgot.
Listen to XM, you know?
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. All right, so we have reached the citizen, the point in our agenda for citizens input. Do we have any input from citizenry, Mr. Munt?
Uh, I didn't get to write about the county park the last week, I guess, we get to it. Uh, a couple more questions. How many acres do you know right up in, how many acres are already in CRP up there?
Uh, on that present parcel of like twenty-eight, I believe is the amount. This hundred and twenty-one will take it to a hundred and forty-nine, I think. And then there's some the waste ground and stuff that can't even be in CRP creates for remainder of the farm, so.
So a hundred and twenty, one of it can go in?
Yep.
Okay, and um, so a lot of it, we'll discuss last week was a little bit, I thought I called about whom I knew this or. Yeah, so is it, are, right now, is something being worked out officially with the fair board on that? Is that still in works?
Yes, that is current.
Okay. And is it for sure three hundred dollars an acre?
Three hundred dollars an acre was there. Uh, what we're applying for.
That's what we're applying for.
For ten years.
I feel confident with that number. If approved, will be that number, but I, there's always that potential that it could be less than that. That's the maximum we could get.
And then seating, specifically, what would it be seated in? Do you have the prairie grass or?
That's what, for pheasant recovery, I would imagine that's what they'll suggest. I don't have that particular, but they'll probably have some quality or.
Probably be a mixture, wouldn't it, Kyle? Orange grass and prairie grass and.
Say a mix of grasses.
A mix of grasses.
I mean, the CRP program requires certain things to be. Yeah, you have these options that are available on the planet in the CRP. Pheasants Forever uses those options. And they come up with the mix that's best for pheasants, whale. They look like they really liked water and have theirs.
That's all they have.
That's not black water. Okay.
Don't, but it's there.
Sherry, are you here for, okay, did you have anything you'd like to bring for citizens input? Okay. All right, um, that brings us to the conclusion of our business for the day. Motion was made by Mr. Mulbauer, second by Ms. Hayden that we might adjourn. Any further discussion on that? All in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. Have a great day.
Ronnie, how's Karen?